Hello everyone, welcome to the IBP meeting. Would anybody be offended if I took the mask off? Alright, because I have more balls in my mouth anyway when I talk. And the mask gets much worse and you get tired of hearing me, so... Thank you for showing up to the IBP meeting. Any first time people here? One, that's pretty good. So, we have a couple first time guests. Trooper Gorgovich, okay, and Trooper Hansel. You guys make yourselves comfortable to feel like you have a stand. They may have to go, okay, they are on duty right now, so if they have to whisk out of here, that's just the nature of the beast, but they're here to get a little bit understanding of how this is going for you guys, okay, so welcome them. Okay, so, so what's your name?
Eddie.
Eddie, okay, so Eddie, rule, fast. Has anybody explained the strategy to you?
No, the first time, I just stated it.
Oh, well, we gotta get the word out better than that, alright? We got people in Richmond who don't know it. We gotta make sure we get people to understand it, okay, so I'm gonna put that one here guys, because it'll be homework. So Eddie, you may have homework assigned, but we need you here tonight. Eddie, don't finish that or not, I don't feel like I have to take notes. We got people taking notes here for you. We wanted to talk about the strategy. Basically, there's two problems in this strategy. One, it's us, okay? And we go through these essential goals, I'll explain more of that problem. The other problem is you guys, okay? Which, you know, may be working with us, and then maybe you guys taking a little different perspective on your community and how you envision. Does that make sense, Eddie? Two problems to that. It'll make more sense here, so I'm gonna read these simple goals to you guys, so you guys can understand, Eddie. We're gonna create a safe and secure environment in Richmond. These aren't goals, we just talked about beliefs, we actually put these in action, alright? So, when I say create a safe and secure environment, is you guys have Richmond in mind. I don't know Richmond, they don't know Richmond. That's just the way the state police work, you know, it's just, you know, we work in areas where we don't live. That's the nature of the beast, okay? So, when we come in, we say, "What's in your mind, Richmond for a safe and secure community?" We can't put that idea in your mind, you gotta put it in our department. And we then envision it together, does that make sense? Okay, so, that's not as easy as it sounds, because when we call people in the department and say, "Give us what you think is a safe and secure community," they couldn't do it, because they didn't know. So you gotta think about that, let's figure out what that is. And then once you see it, you can envision it, then you can start going towards it. I don't like him just talking that he's the wrong guy here, so... Does that make sense, Eddie?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's the thing, we do it together. Promote, foster, community relationships, partnership with local, state, police, community leaders, and local organizations, okay? So, obviously, you know, we understand what the police aspect of it is, but community leaders, that's you, okay, and local organizations, that's any other stakeholders that we can visualize by. Okay, we talked about the SAR model, okay, so the SAR model, anybody remember what the S is for the SAR model? Scan, I'm doing a proper job teaching. Scan, okay, you scan for problems. So you guys are scanning for problems in your community. We don't always know, understand, and know those problems, okay, because we're in, we're out, we're going to other stuffs. So, we collectively scan it for the problems, okay? Alright, then the A, which is you assess the problem. What is the problem? You can look at the problem, "Well, that's something bad," okay? It's much more complex than just something bad. You've gotta unpack what that is, and you've gotta find out the stakeholders that can also help with planning, resources, and then executing, okay? R is your response to it, okay? So stakeholders sit at the table, and then come up the plan, we execute it, and then the A is how did it work out? Did we scrap it, or did we keep working with it? Okay, and there were templates often, okay, but, you know, each town has different templates. Reduce drug activity and violence in Richmond, okay? Both are here, okay? I don't think that's any surprise to anybody here, that's why you're all sitting here. We could talk about all the other effects and other problems in Richmond, but we know that your problems stem much deeper than the little things besides drugs, the violence of first, second, and third order effects of that, okay? So, if you get down into the weeds and you start looking at what's really the problem, that's where we wanna go, okay? So if you wanna reduce drug activity and violence, we wanna take the market away, because we understand, and I think everybody else understands, and I just from Vermont, and many places, when it comes to prosecution, we can arrest, 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 and prosecution then is out of our hands, and what happens there, you know, and if they're back on the streets, they're back in the community, then we arrest them again, and it's just this, this just circle, right? So that's why we're saying, "That needs to stop, we need to do something different." So what makes better sense, or more sense, is take the market away for the drug fingers. Does that make sense, Eddie?
Yeah, a lot of the drug stuff, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, you bet you're right. Alright, establish positive effective youth and parental programs, okay? So, the kids today that are growing up in it, we don't want them to keep in that vicious cycle. Where's Bob? Right, right Bob? Exactly, so, Bob knows when he thinks, he's like, "Kids, we gotta think the future." That's what that is, that's what that really is. We have to get them out of the vicious cycle, okay? But it can't be just the state police doing it, we've gotta figure out other stakeholders, how we can make youth and parental programs and/or long-term success for the kids in this community, okay? Unity, a different is essential. So, first couple meetings, Eddie, you were here, but a lot of finger pointing, you know, and a lot of directions, we gotta think we've stopped that, and now we're all saying, "Okay, let's not point fingers at each other now, let's work collectively together," okay? So us, we work collectively, how can we defeat the problems, okay? Generating intelligence by and through the community. So, like I said, you know, we have to walk and chew gum at the same time out of the barracks. We've got a lot of cases going on, and, you know, without a doubt, on a daily basis, okay? So we prioritize what we have, and we understand what the biggest problem is to us. And you guys, you guys may have what you think is the biggest problem, then, but then Montgomery may have a bigger problem, what they think is a bigger problem, then you got Swan, and they think there's a bigger problem there, you know, so we gotta start prioritizing, you know, what's, when it comes to drugs, what's the second, third order effects, domestic violence, you know, crash and DUIs, fraud, theft, you know, on and on, right? So that's why we partnered up with you guys, because when we look at our area of operation, Richmond is our priority, okay? So, but we have other things that are coming in. We have, we've had a priority we've been investigating, it's on Richmond, okay, somewhere out there, can't tell you where, we put that, and a party on our board, our Spargo West Board, and we started working. We have intelligence coming in, just like everything I've told you, we start blending the intelligence, okay? What happens eventually? Boom, alright, we run an operation, and then we get a big score, okay? We get a big score, but that doesn't end the investigation, we have to continue on with it, alright? In this case, this historical drug house, after this big score that we hit on this house, still activity going on. Not a surprise to us, not a surprise, it's gonna get on. If you have a cancer and you catch it quickly, you can get it out quicker, right? But if it's there, it's testing, it's getting deeper and deeper, approaching grows, then it makes it much tougher to get out. So we have to be patient together, okay? And you guys, you know, also understand, you know, and we understand that, you know, people are afraid to speak up, to put themselves out there, to be witnesses, okay? When we come to you and we say, "Hey, listen, this is what we got, are you willing to give a sworn written affidavit?" Sorry, that's the way it works in most states, okay? And if you're credible, okay, meaning that... Joyce, right?
Yes.
Joyce, you know, if I go to Joyce, and I say, "Hey Joyce, you know, would you be able to swear to this because you saw this?" "Yes, you know, I can, but Joyce is that, but I was arrested one time for giving false information, so please alter." Okay? That might be a problem, I'm not saying to Joyce, but I don't know that about Joyce, maybe she didn't, but, okay, that might be a problem, okay? However, we know Joyce is a detained citizen, and we go to Joyce, and we say, "Joyce, you saw this, look, this is what happened, okay? Are you willing to give a sworn written affidavit?" "Well, no, I don't wanna give you a sworn written affidavit, I feel like I'll be targeted, I will then be the victim, and I'm scared." Okay, right, okay, but your neighbor, what's your name?
Sharon.
Sharon?
Sharon.
Sharon, okay.
You got it.
I mispronounced her names too, but I love them. So, so Sharon, I say, "Hey, you know, you guys have been talking about this problem, and now, look, and now we're here where we are, are you guys willing to give me a sworn written affidavit?" And you guys, "I went, I don't know." "Yeah, a little deer, they could come for us both," right? But if I went to Andrew, Andrew lives right down the street, "Andrew, you saw a bunch of this stuff," because we know, you said you saw it. Like, okay, so now I got Andrew, Joyce, and Sharon, right? Okay, know what your name is, sir? Yeah.
John.
John. Now, John's a neighbor, living in the same neighborhood, you see what's happening here? The difference between Joyce and all of you guys as a community now willing to say, "You know, we want to stop this, we want to stop this, we're tired of it." So now you guys as a community, come together and put your foot down, and we can proceed with the prosecution. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay? But we can't get there unless we have intelligence coming in anyway, so we'd like to get with you guys to have you guys understand, we want more of a flow of intelligence. Of course, the guys, you know, we get on emails, and they say, "Hey, listen, we got this, we understand what's going on, thank you, we're gonna put this over here, and there, and there," okay? While we walk and chew gum at the same time, this is what we have to do. We don't wanna do that too much, because then, you know, things get clouded, you know, and that's not good, so, but we have our priorities, okay? And so, we gotta work through those, and we take the biggest storm aside of your community first, okay? Then we go to the next one. Does that make sense to you guys? So when we're talking about last point, if you're generating intelligence by and through the community, you guys have to understand, when you're giving us intelligence, okay, as a community, you're much more powerful than anything that we could ever provide. And it's hard for people to understand, I think, these guys are gonna test. Sure, we carry it down in handcuffs, okay, but we're not nearly as powerful as you guys collectively in this community. You guys have to understand it, because it's real, right? So, when we go to state attorney's office, we say, "We got five neighbors together that are willing to give sworn written affidavits that they saw these things, that's unbeatable, that's powerful." It's crazy, though. Any questions on that? Stop them in the tracks. Eddie, you don't have a hand?
No.
Oh, this whole thing?
Keep going, yeah.
Okay, alright, if I talk too fast, let me know, yes?
Have you found that when a community works together, and a handful or more people come forward and do their sworn, signed affidavits, that it's less likely there'll be a backlash by the bad actors that are being targeted?
Yes.
Always.
Okay. That's important now.
I, I haven't seen in years, how many years you been on? Eight, what, eight, right? And I've been on 50 years, so, out of all our years collectively, we've never seen that once. You know, and there's a lot, you know, this is the state of Vermont, okay? And there's a lot of good things about small communities, and then again, there's a lot, you know, because you guys have small communities, everybody knows, okay? But, you know, when you guys are talking about you putting your foot down, and the whole town knows it, because you guys, where's Eddie, right? You guys put up signs and anything else, right? You guys put up signs to say to everybody in Richmond, whether they've been here a day or 10 years, is that, "We're done with it, we're tired of it, we've put our foot down, this is what we're doing, you've all been put on alert." Okay? If something comes up, and we've gotta turn people in, that's the way it's gonna be, because we're tired. This one.
Do the drug dealers or whoever we're talking about, whether we want to shut down, do they have access, delay to be able to find out who did sign affidavits to put them away or bring them to court?
Eventually be an out of record, yes, yes. Okay, but when they see a whole neighborhood, or a whole community, you know what I mean? Plus, whatever, it doesn't mean anything to them anyway, see, the purpose is, let's take everything that I say we can do, there's no absolutes in this world, okay? Everybody knows that, we're all adults in here, okay? But if I'm selling a crop, you know, and somebody said, "We can't sell that crop over there," alright, but you can't go sell over there, you know, probably, you probably have customers over there, I'm gonna go over there where I can sell those crops as freely as I can. Does that make sense? It's pretty much that stuff. It's all about survival. And if you're slamming dope, it's probably not a desire, you see, okay?
Can I try my best, please?
Yes, go ahead, Eddie.
Just, just a couple of weeks ago, me and another trooper were investigating a case where a community was, we're walking back to the same, because they knew that two guys that we were investigating were gonna retaliate. So what we did was, we kinda put our home, went directly to those guys, and like, "We know you did it, we have community members that know you did it, they saw you do it, but they're afraid you're gonna retaliate, and so here's what's gonna happen. If anything happens to any of those people, I'm not telling you who they are, I'm coming right for you, kind of getting you." And that was, that shut her up. As soon as we did that, one got those sworn written statements from the other people, and we were able to charge it down. Yeah, so it's, it's small little steps, I know some people were left, and go, "That's honestly what we needed for the case to go and get it over." And then, we tell the bad guys, "We know it's you, we're 100% certain it's you, and we're coming after you if you even try to do anything or say anything to anybody in the community because of something that we did." Just one example, yes?
In, in the scenarios, and so much of it is really about drugs, hard drugs in particular, how often are you seeing the bad actors being, you know, homegrown, embedded members of the community or out of state, or just like, what's that dynamic looking like?
It's a mix of everything, okay? Let me just put out, right now, I forgot to put out, you know, we are a bias-free policing agency, okay? Meaning if you call us and you said, "Hey, we have Martians down the street," we know they're from Mars, we can see them, okay? And they're probably at the no good. We're gonna tell you, "Please don't call us with that information again, we're not leasing based on that they are Martians." Makes sense? Okay? Now, if somebody called and said, "Hey, I saw this Martian, he was driving down," and not even that, you know, "I saw whoever, I saw a vehicle driving down, and it went into this house, and in there five minutes, shot for fire, and ran out of the house, and took off down the road," okay? That's not a suspicion, that's a criminal, but if, let's say they, they were casing or looking around the house, out of who were there from what you saw, okay, like seeing on a daily basis, and we'd be like, "Okay, can you give the description of the person driving, male, female?" Female, okay? White, black, Hispanic? White, okay? See, that, that's how that information is helpful, okay? It's not, you know, we don't want that information based on anything other than reasonable suspicion, okay, suspicious activity, or probable cause. Does that make sense with everybody? Okay?
I guess my question really was, you know, if it's an embedded person who's grown up in the community, everybody knows Joe Bob, and they can identify, and they go, "Oh, it was Joe Bob," and if it's somebody who's not, then you're like, "I don't know who that person was."
Yes, and I'm sorry I took it so long to answer your question, but I just wanna put that out there before everybody else. Exactly, okay? It's the same thing is, if I went to a foreign country, okay, and...
Canada.
Canada, okay?
Canada, fair.
Yeah, I don't know anybody, you know, and nobody knows me, okay, but the community knows everybody, the tiny niche communities know people, that's what we're trying to train here, okay? So, you know, if you have, you know, let's say you have somebody who is in the community which has a drug problem, we understand, okay, that people get addicted to these narcotics, alright? First of all, we wanna open our hand out to say we wanna help them, okay? Does that make sense? Because if we help them, and either get them on a vengeance or get them off the drugs, that's taking away the market, okay? They're not bad people, people have, you know, get addicted to drugs for various different reasons, okay? So, but if we can take that a market away, we can't. So, we have what we call sore cities, okay? Sore cities, okay? So sore cities, no one grows and cooks heroin in the state of Vermont, but I know, okay? So if you look at the bigger picture, and you understand how cocaine and heroin are processed, cooked, and everything else, cut up, and then it all comes from, you know, the South, but it comes from the South, and they come in from the North and so forth, it's complicated, but it doesn't come from Vermont. It usually goes to the cities, New York, there's like 20 cities in Massachusetts, Little , yeah, Mayor, okay? It goes there, and then it's brought in a thousand different ways into the state of Vermont, okay? So when we, if we start finding a way, a habit of somebody bringing in dope into the state of Vermont, guess what we do? We start figuring out a way to defeat that habit, okay? Then guess what are they? They change, right? We figure that out, they change, we figure that out, they change again. So we have to constantly be changing. It could be a person down the street, okay? They could be going down to Manussee, bringing up what's been brought up from the sore city up here, Burlington, okay? Or within the community, they could be getting in other different ways. Maybe, you know, it's not like you guys got these big crack houses or narcotic houses here, but maybe you have a lot of personal use here, but how are the drugs getting into the community? Okay? So, to me, the tougher problem is, if you've got a lot of people in the community, and you got a lot of people who are addicted to drugs, but you don't have big numbers coming in, okay? That to me is a tougher situation. That's where we gotta start talking about NGOs and other methods of taking the market away. Does that make sense? Okay, so it could be anyone. There's no sector, there's no gender, there's nothing that will identify who's addicted to drugs that would be bringing them in, okay? But, when you see activity, suspicious activity, that's how we tell. And I think a lot of you in the room could already probably identify that activity, okay? These houses with multiple traffic lanes, in and out, all hours of the night, maybe not so much a day, they're there for five minutes, and they leave. You've got all kinds of plated vehicles in there, outstate vehicles, Vermont vehicles, you see that activity, that should be raising your eyebrows, okay? That ain't your problem?
Yes.
Okay. Five more minutes on this topic, and then I'll, you know, we can open up a more discussion on this. Eddie, do you have anything? Five more minutes of this, you know, and then we try to get to this, I don't know what you guys have been planning, that we can talk about the Harvest Festival, okay? So, anybody have any questions on all that jazz I just fed you guys tonight? Okay? So this other house that we were working on, historically a problem house, maybe even human trafficking going on on this house, okay? Big deal, a lot of stakeholders involved, and even stakeholders when we're working the investigation that we didn't even know, and we didn't even identify, but that's how you do things, you get, you go through these investigations and you learn a whole lot. So we learn a lot through these whole investigations, a lot as well. You know, somebody asked me, like, "Well, can we get details from investigations?" We can't, okay, especially when they're ongoing, okay? But I can give you little tidbits like this, but that's about it, okay? And I, I told you guys, is that, you know, we had troopers, we had troopers who've been training, it works this way, okay, for years, and now we're getting to, you know, we're trying to turn the ship, okay? And if, you know, now it works this way. It's not an easy task, but it's not an easy task for you guys, right? It's a big ship going down in the ocean, get all these oars in the water, and when you have all these oars, and only two of them are trying to change the direction, that's pretty tough, right? The more oars we have moving in the other direction, the better off, and assume we're gonna move that ship in the right direction. Does that make sense? Okay, I got all these now, these all day, you know what I mean? On this room. Alright, you guys have anything on that, you guys wanna explain?
Can I make an announcement that kinda goes along with this?
Yeah, sure.
I recently wrote a grant, a COVID grant, for extra law enforcement, which I got. This isn't to be part of this, this is to enhance, maybe, work together. The nice part of this is we can direct where we want them to go. So, you may see two sheriffs in town, or you may see one in the daytime, and they may be sitting somewhere all day, and you're gonna say, "Why are they sitting there?" Well, there's a reason, okay, it's been predetermined. So there's some spots that we've already determined. What I would like from you is, if you have an area that you see a lot of activity that's any kind, not, I'm not talking drugs, I'm talking any kind of bad activity, that you could email me. Don't call me if you see a four wheeler that's not registered, but if you see an area of town that you think there's quite a bit of activity that they need to sit, I mean, it's mostly visibility, having more people in town, and I'm sure they share with the state police, and they all work together, so, just wanted to let you know that we did get a grant for, it'll be for October, November, and part of December. So if you have any questions, you can come up to us.
Cool, great, thank you. What? Somebody say something?
No, I said, "Thank you."
Oh, yeah. The bell just tolled and sounded, I couldn't hear you. Eddie, that other bit of the information that we were requiring about, I sent up the chain of command, so I haven't heard back on that, but we'll keep on talking. Okay, so Eddie, uh, anything that you wanna throw at the crowd here for that Harvest Festival?
Me, you wanna? You want me to talk about it, or you wanna help bring that down?
Do you wanna hand me your notes? I don't care, either or. So we have the Harvest Festival planned for next Sunday. Um, we've kind of...
Sunday, what day is it?
The 11th, definitely, right? About, oh, yeah. So next Sunday, I guess I'm gonna hang it. Um, so we kind of have a thing of some food, how we're gonna, what we're gonna have for food, so basic stuff like hot dogs, popcorn. Um, we're gonna ask tonight for volunteers for making cookies. Um, if you guys do make cookies, they have to eat consistently bad. I didn't look that too far. So, if you get good at the end of this meeting tonight, if you wanna come to the back and let us know if you guys would be willing to make cookies. Hillary got 100 hot dogs donated from...
Oh, really?
So, probably by tomorrow.
They asked it, they gives it?
I hope so.
The doc donated like 150 gallons of water.
Nice.
Various communities, or various, um, businesses have donated money, so about like $500. Hartman donated 50 pumpkins.
Is that Bob?
And then we'll get 50 more.
Nice.
For like two bucks a piece, so that was nice.
On the donation part of it, I'm just curious, at the last meeting, they just, I had some few, a few that were ladies auxiliary, I think, anyone come from?
What region, you mean, or the, or?
No, uh, I thought it was the ladies auxiliary.
Of what?
Were they gonna donate, um, who was it that was here? I can't remember, there was someone here.
Ginger, wait.
Ginger, right? Ginger was not here, so, okay.
They were gonna try to, they're here tonight.
Okay.
I, do you want me to follow up on this?
Yeah, the ladies auxiliary and the American Legion both said they were gonna donate.
Yeah.
Um, A and D excavation, I believe, is gonna donate, but I haven't got any money from them yet. Uh, Weatherby's, someone said they were gonna go to Weatherby's, I haven't heard there. Um, Linda, Kylie, did you guys get a chance to see what maybe the town?
Oh, yeah, we got some harvest money because we didn't do, was Kylie here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't do the parade this year, so we have a little money that we can put toward whatever we need, I think, right?
Yeah, so right now we have about, roughly about five hundred dollars. Do you have that paper, it has the?
This one?
Yeah, we had like a hundred, uh, so the pumpkins, Hillary, is gonna be like a hundred dollars for the pumpkins. What about a porta potty?
Yeah, I can have them move the one, I was gonna have the one taken out of the playground unless you think it's too early to take it out. I can just order one from there for the day. Not too early? Okay. Alright.
Do they, do they clean that once a week?
Yeah, and they, they replace it every week.
Okay, so maybe then.
Do you want me to call?
Yeah, see if maybe instead of putting it out there, they could just put it down there for that weekend.
Well, I don't think they'll come up to move it for a weekend, so we, we just get one.
Okay.
It's not that much, we just get one.
Do you want to get it out of this, or is it down there to get it?
I, I can, I can figure it out.
Perfect, cool.
I just gotta remember to do it and then get it in time.
When's there your porta potty?
Yay.
Andy, where do you think a good place would be to put that down there?
In the back?
How about down there, the historical society?
Oh, you're gonna wanna near the?
Well, we're running anywhere across the.
You're gonna be there as long as it's visible, right?
Yeah.
Where by the historical society?
I'd say on the side of one of the doors.
What?
Off the side of one of the doors.
Yeah, but it's on the sidewalk, hold on. Can't do that. I'm gonna have to.
Yeah, we could put it right across, and that would be our, this would be a park and a lot, across the, sort of.
Can I get permission from the people?
We require them to get permission from the people, go right at times of the law.
Just tell me and I'll call them tomorrow, I mean, just let me know exactly when I'll turn them on, okay?
Good. What else we got?
Jason, you want, uh, I, you know, you were talking about last meeting about food, because you had said that maybe you guys wanted to help do it, so I said.
Yeah, Mike said we'll do whatever, we'll do whatever.
Do you wanna just get with like, uh, after the meeting, you know, and come up?
Yeah, let's do that.
On the food part?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, and then, um, Paul?
Yeah.
Want to add a little what you're doing?
Okay, um, we talked about having a coin drop, okay?
Yep.
We got authorized, but we can do it, and we're gonna do it from on Saturday, the tenth. This Saturday, I'm sorry, on the third.
Okay.
We're gonna do it then, and, um, we need a few volunteers to stand down with us and collect money.
Okay. Now, would that be from this room or beyond?
Anybody?
What day is it off, what day?
Pardon?
What day is it, on the day of the Harvest Festival?
No, it's Saturday, that this Saturday.
Oh, it's this Saturday, okay. Where's the money for? To know, but it's for, tell me.
Yeah, I was thinking that. I tell you, it doesn't register, so.
Sure, if you want to order.
Do they usually advertise that?
On the day of the Harvest Festival?
I don't think they usually advertise it, I think they just, they catch it, they catch it.
Right, stand in the room. You can't help us, oh. But what we did is, we, hey, we have permission, we gotta, it's always set up to go. All we need is people down there to stand until they come.
Oh, I said it's a big thing, many times.
If you stand there, you know, it'll get to you. Hey, that's gonna be right on the party. Okay, and it's gonna be from nine until two.
Okay. Just till two.
Nine till two?
And if, if anybody wants to volunteer, uh, like Andy said, let's get, let's get your name down on a piece of paper, so we know that how many people we're gonna have, or if we're gonna have people, and what we're gonna do, do with it, okay? Thank you.
Anyone willing to do that, to Paul, just get with Paul separate on that, right? You're going with that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that.
Hey, Bob, good idea.
I got, uh, also, uh, the tractor wagon, um, I'm gonna drive the tractor, um, Pleasant Valley Farms is gonna donate a tractor for the day for the hay, for the hayride.
Is Momma there?
I didn't get permission yet, but she'll, she'll let me. But I'm curious, I'm trying to figure out a route in my head of where we should go, and I, this is just what I was thinking, was if we left from the flyer station and went up to the golf course, and, cause there's like a horseshoe driveway at the golf course, so you wouldn't have to back up, you just pull in, circle around, and then come back? I don't, I'm looking for suggestions.
That'd be a nice foliage.
That would be nice. I think it'd be very nice.
Is it too far, campfire enough?
I think it's far enough.
I think it's far enough, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, it's good.
Yeah, actually, they just do, that would be a nice one.
So the, uh, Andy, on the advertisement of the flyers of the festival, how's that been going?
All done, actually, they put it twice, they lost. So basically, they put it twice because the, um, Lions Club is providing the insurance. So we, we wanted to recognize and thank them for, you know, doing that for us, so we made a second set that just, you know, recognized them, so Sean would have replaced the loss.
Yeah, hey.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks for the idea. Yeah, good.
Paint and brushes for the pumpkins? You got like, not like?
I think so, I have, right now I have, I bought, I have little two ounce piles, I have seventy-five of those, and I have nine on brushes. I, you know, ones like this, I've got all different colors, cause I don't think, my son thought I would wear one in black and white, but I said, no. Little girls want purple. So I think, if you only have that's enough, but buy some more.
Nope, so I, I think we're good there.
Should you pick them up, Andy, so we have them all, or have them all brought to a certain place here?
Yeah, you think maybe you could just drop them off here?
Just where you want them?
Sure, during the week, you could just bring them in and give them to Melissa or Kylie or Andy here.
Bring them to the office? Yeah, sure. I heard they can admit anyone.
Yeah.
Also, I was going to bring, maybe this sounds stupid, but I was, I was going to bring some bolo bottles of gold and some pieces of yarn, so I can put hair on theirs if they wanted to.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah.
I thought that might be some, I'll throw that in.
Oh, yeah, that is.
Yeah.
And for the pumpkin painting, um, we're gonna need some volunteers, I, I, my daughters are gonna volunteer, I think Kylie's daughters, I've got three. I think we're gonna need more, probably, I, I, I'm just guessing, maybe like six, so if anybody else wants to volunteer.
I'll send an email out to all the kids telling them we'll give them community service, if and what we need it for.
Okay. And are they gonna get ahold of me, or how, how old are they for?
I'll have them get ahold of me and then I'll text you the list.
Okay. How many kids do we think we need?
Well, between the coin drop and, because it's two Saturday, so two, two different, one Saturday, one Saturday, so it's two opportunities.
Are there any, are there any people that we can help out with, besides the heating, or?
Yeah, cause you could always have a peanut, you know, setup, pickup.
And with coordinating with the tractor ride, like loading and unloading, maybe?
Should have like somebody on the tractor, too.
I, I think so on the wagon.
Yeah. You do.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to decorate, I don't know how much decorating you do, I think there's still stuff down underneath the post office that Hollid always used to use for the fall festival we used to have, so, might wanna take a look if you want to put anything up.
Okay, and Andy, you're good with us using the tables? Yeah, it's chairs as long as we cover them, obviously.
Yeah, we just.
And then what about, someone said something about a grill?
We have a, we've got a small grill over there, but we also have a good sized griddle, it'd be fine for the hot dogs.
Okay, will that work, Tracy?
Sure.
You good with that?
Perfect.
Is wine cooking a lot of that?
Probably.
Can we get like a apron, can we make him up one?
Oh, I've got one more. That might not be appropriate.
Have we missed anything? Palm porn, Hillary? Hillary?
I think Tracy said she has one.
What?
You're good with the palm porn?
I have palm porn.
Okay, Hillary's bought the palm porn already, we just gotta get a little brown eye. What about ketchup? With all this COVID thing, I don't think we can have people, shouldn't we have like the individual little ketchup things?
Yeah.
Is that something we need to think about, or is that not a big deal?
Need packets in restaurants, so you're probably doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Figure it out, right?
Good. So, you know, we, we don't need to do the bulk of these, you know, like, we're hoping that through, through the years, you, you guys are gonna be able to spin off into subcommittees and, and identifying stakeholders to certain issues and certain problems, based off of this whole thing, okay? So we're always gonna be here, you know, every week, we may not be the ones up here every week, okay? Like, next week, I can't be here, and I don't know if I can have a trooper here, but that should not stop you guys from voting the IDP meeting. And if Border Patrol is gonna be here, then, or the Sheriff's Department, then they can leave. Um, but I will be back the, uh, the next Thursday. So, yes sir.
What about Monday?
Yeah, well, yeah, there'll be troopers there, I don't know if I'll be there, cause I'm on vacation, need one, it's been a long time. So, uh, but there will be troopers there, also, uh, the invitation's extended to the Border Patrol and the Sheriff's Department, so.
Did Andy ask you about putting pens to give their kids, or pencils?
Yeah, I'm looking at trying to see what we have, um, available, um. We've, we've got a couple of different closets that we could probably try to dig up, if that makes sense, you know, if they were getting called. Uh, pens, pamphlets, whatever.
Stickers.
Stickers, yep.
A lot of cars with the IDP email on it.
Yes.
Reminder. Cause a lot, a lot of people are asking about that, but they don't, they, like, they don't know what, like, where they're supposed to see.
Yeah.
I don't know, eventually I think you need to get some that are magnetic. And everybody can put it on their fridge at home, the Border Patrol have a magnetic one that they hand out, it's very, you put it on the fridge and it's there, and if you ever need the number, it's there.
Okay, it's a good idea. Um, where was I going before that? Talked about, oh, yes, sir.
Now, I was just wondering what the state police was gonna do, you heard what we were doing, I wonder what you were gonna do this weekend that we're put on.
And, what do you mean by that, like?
I mean, are you gonna have one car here, two cars, one trooper, two troopers? You're gonna have somebody walking around, you talked about handing out stickers and stuff, do you have that material ready to do that?
I don't have the material right now, but we have.
Will you have, uh, the test or level?
Yes, we plan on being there, we, we've been doing this collectively, you know, together, you know, playing for this, right? And we plan on being there, so are you, it sounds like you're questioning whether we're gonna be there or not.
That's what I'm kinda.
So, what's your answer?
Paul.
Paul, so here's the thing, okay? We're trying to make this where you guys are, are doing this, and us together, okay? This A and D state police whole thing, they've come to think of that all.
I think we're trying to bring you in to meet the community, right?
Right.
To meet people, to know who you're talking.
Right, but I'll tell you, here's the thing, we're gonna be here in much different other ways, wearing different hats and different dates and doing different things, okay? One meet and greet at a Harvest Festival is gonna be the deal, and I truly agree with that. You know, if we have a shift of a couple troopers who can show up, okay, and then they get a call and they leave, because they got a domestic, they gotta go to Georgia, don't hold that against us. Okay? We're, we're planning this as, and again, the strategy is for the state police to come in and take over the town. The strategy is about town retaking itself, and we do that together.
I love the state police.
Yeah, but like I've been trying to tell, tell you, okay? We can't be the sole center of the, of the solution here.
I don't think we're asking you.
Okay, right, I, I just wanna make sure that.
Be part of it, right?
I just, we are, okay? But what I've been trying to tell you guys is that if you're counting on us to be in the center of the town, okay? I can't realistically pay a trooper to be there the whole day, I can't do it, alright? It's gonna have to be troopers off the ship. Alright? So instead of coming into your town, answering its hall, and leading in, okay? Then we have to deal with the other problems across the, our area of operation, alright? That's not working anymore, alright? And we have to be able to create some kind of force multiplier, and that's you, okay? Yet, you giving us the information, that's being here when we can be here, we could be in and out, where we can't sustain certain things, and I'm just being realistic with you, okay?
Realistic, so the Park Department's gonna be, and they have a hall as well, too, right?
Right, exactly, but the Park Department is a part of the town, okay? State troopers are not. So don't hold it against us if we show up, five minutes later, the two troopers or one trooper's gotta leave. We plan on being there for the festival and being part of the festival, okay?
Okay.
But just really sure you understand that.
So what about the Border Patrol, Andy, have you heard anything from the Border Patrol?
Uh, sorry, what's up?
Have you heard anything from the Border Patrol, are they gonna be there Saturday?
Uh, at the last meeting, the way that we left it was I was sending an invite to the Sheriff's and, uh, Gary and whoever the other trooper was, I forget now, we're gonna send an invite to the Border Patrol.
Since we did, I just talked to Rachel Parker, or I didn't talk to her, but I sent them an email, I haven't heard back from her yet. Okay, we have a representative from the Border Patrol here right now.
And I also, like, when I talked to, uh, the Sheriff's Department, they were going to possibly look into whoever does the, the ATV patrol for them, uh, I can't remember the name, but they, he was gonna see about possibly having them there to.
And we may have them on a Saturday anyway.
Regardless, this is gonna be a great community act.
Yes.
Regardless.
Exactly. So.
Can I just add one more thing? How about face masks, or, we could get all those face masks, tie dyes to get out of the car.
They, they're, they're all done.
They did, how many did they get?
I think it was eighty or a hundred.
Eighty or how many, perfect.
Whoever gave me the tie dye.
I gave you seventy-five. No, I gave you eighty, 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 okay. So they're all done?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
I had a couple of mine, I was too, that she took with her, so it'd probably be close to a hundred.
So we can give them out? I got more.
They got, they have tie dyes, so they have some.
Oh, good, good, that'll be nice.
Alright, it's a cool project.
Yeah, this is supposed to be a Saturday, a Sunday, not a Saturday.
Sunday.
Alright? Everybody keeps saying Saturday, it's on a Sunday.
It's on a Sunday, right. Anything else on that?
Pray for good weather.
Pray for good weather, right?
Yeah, no alcohol.
No alcohol, good, bye.
No alcohol. Right, Andy, so, we, we keep that in serious about that.
Yeah, part of the insurance.
Part of the insurance. Well, yeah, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what you want to see or whatever, or if you say something, maybe, you know, if they're putting out something in the insurance to do it, we all need to make sure that if you see something, like, they're gonna give you, you need to tell them, like, hey, I'm here, just go.
Right.
Take a walk.
Okay, any other questions on the festival or anything?
If anyone has any more donations, please either do it with me or Kylie, like, in the next couple days, so we know what we have for money, and then, um, we're trying to, oh, what about the, we didn't, we didn't talk about the bags of candy for all the kids, because, you want to touch base on that?
Um, we were just thinking, cause the kids probably won't be able to go trick or treating this year, that we could do like a hundred, a hundred and fifty bags of candy, and hand them to the. Um, we were just thinking, cause the kids probably won't be able to go trick or treating this year, that we could do like a hundred, a hundred and fifty bags of candy, and hand them to the kids, they'll be in individual bags, didn't know what people thought about that.
When they take a pumpkin, give them the pumpkin and the candy, and I think we have enough money, if we get all the donation to that, everyone said that they're still gonna bring in, you know, I think, I think we're gonna have the money to do that. Maybe not. Good, are we gonna get anything before we all leave, go home, and then start thinking about it?
Just play cookies with anyone.
I'll do the cookies, I'll know them.
Okay.
Who cares, we'll do all the cookies.
They're just gonna be good.
Thought you were.
Yeah, I would, I need.
Cookies can feel a lot like a vacation.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. To the top.
A cookie can get purpose, how can you get purpose?
Okay, so, just, just so everybody understands, okay? I don't want any unrealistic expectations, and, you know, Paul, you and I can talk offline, if, you know, you wanna communicate more on that. Everybody understands why we're doing this strategy, because of the past and how we've been doing things. Hasn't been the answer for this community, for many communities in the state of Vermont, okay? So we gotta figure out how we can do things better, but realistically, we have an operation tempo, and we have all first services we have to adhere to in other towns as well. So we have to be able to do it in a smart way, and I can't make any promises to you guys that I can't be, okay? But I have to be realistic about it, and I have to be realistic about something we can sustain and we can't sustain. There are many communities who wish that we could be there more often, and we wish we could be there, okay? But I'm not gonna stand up here and tell you that we can't. There's days that we can, and there's days that we can't. There's, there could be days we're gonna be in here in full force, running operations, okay? There's certain things that we have to deal with, um, pregnancies, I just had one of these guys back from one of them.
But you don't even look like you.
Yeah. He's back very well. And the other one was under twenty. So I just got, booked these guys back, okay? So I've gotta be realistic about what I can do, personnelize, it's about being smarter, okay? And like I said before, and these guys can attest, we put two troopers here in, in town, that's not going to change how we do things and be smart about it. We can rest, and rest, and rest our way out of all we want, but we gotta do things differently, okay? Maybe turn some of the small things, but the underlying, we, in the weak things, it's not gonna stop. This house that we hit, it took eleven ounces of crack cocaine at this house, did that stop them? No, we gotta continue with it, and we gotta keep going after it, okay? So that's why I should do it. You guys have anything you guys wanna add? Okay, I got one other question, Maggie, you're up here. Yeah. Um, Linda had talked about a song, so she's done that for you, to spend on, you know, many things. Yeah. And one thing we thought of was the song that we, you had drawn of, or had a.
I talked to her just now.
Yeah, yeah, so I was actually, I was gonna email you tomorrow, we can have her, and just see if, um, just come up with what you think, and then maybe bring it back and vote on it, or how you wanna do it, or just see the signs they do. I don't know.
Everyone's here, like, why not ask?
Because they don't have the sign, they don't have the sign here.
Like, what do people think that they were wanting to say on, like, start with a fresh slate and see, like, I, I don't know, we don't have to copy anybody's sign, it's our, our community.
Right, we don't have to, but just to get the basic things on there, so like, if you wanna do IDP, see something, say something, have the email address and the phone number put up on it, do you wanna do something simple like that?
Well, can I, can I suggest something, this wasn't my idea, okay? Um, you know, a lot of towns have an identity, okay? And sometimes you have an identity, or a slogan or something, then you, you know, you kind of market, work your way around that, and you now all have something to, to go together, like, yeah. Like, there's a town in Washington State, you stood there, uh, not in town, but it's, it's a community, and they base everything off Christmas. So, guess what the shops in town base everything off of? Christmas, you know what I mean? If, whatever, you know, but if you guys start, you know, I had a trooper farmer, everybody know the trooper farmer, okay? She came up with the idea to frontier town, okay? Cause she knows a little bit of the history of Richford, she'll be back, she's on vacation as well, uh, for a while, but, um, that's an idea, you know? Andy brought this, uh, Andy brought this up to me, and I think it's a good idea. If you guys came up with something and put that on that sign, I think that would be good. Tombridge did their own thing, okay? That's Tombridge, like Andy said, you guys are Richford, you have your own identity and your own plots, it's not me.
That's the name of our book, to frontier town.
But we don't really have, Ri- Richford doesn't, I mean, doesn't really have a, like, a logo, or a slogan, or anything that when you see it, you say, oh, that's Richford. It's like, we don't really, we, I don't know if we've never really created that, but you just don't see it a lot, you know? Yeah, well, maybe you guys, it doesn't mean you have to do it right now, but maybe you guys can think on it, and then come up with that, we can start it.
The other thing, the recent signs I had put in the park, Tammy did a nice maroon and gold, which is our signature colors, so it, it looked nice, so we could do the colors that indicate Richford.
Yes. Has anybody thought about making a, a town white contest?
Town white what?
A town white contest. Come up with a.
A logo or a slogan or something.
Well, we want to get these signs up.
A community wide, in the, in the schools, in the neighborhoods, at the festival, or the, and sort of make it a, uh, maybe pick a date, like, New Year's or something, or it would be chosen, or something, just spitball, you know what I mean? Like, just making it a, a community wide effort right here, people collaborating, and, and, you know, the, the fourth grade class has their idea that they, that they voted on it, and so, just an idea.
Good idea. Yeah, so, to answer your question, you know, I, I don't have to, I, this is your town, okay? So you guys come up with what you think is best on that. Um, if you wanna take some stuff off what Tombridge did with, uh, see something, say something, or, you know, the, the community is, you know, in strength, or whatever, you know? But given the ideas that you guys are strong in, you know, so. Maybe that's a homework, uh, piece for the next meeting. Okay, good, that's a good idea, that's a good idea, that's your next homework assignment. That's your next homework assignment. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think it should be one or two people thinking of what we want on the song, I mean, just. Yeah. The town has to tell, you know, the right people, well, this is what we want on the song, and if we can order it, that's our problem, but I don't think we should, should be everybody saying what goes on a song, or anything like that, I mean, that's just my opinion. Yeah, and then you guys have social media that you guys work in, those channels with, right? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there you go.
So Andy, we had a class at the high school last year that started this before COVID, and we have three or four logos that I bring to the next meeting, and do a sample, and so I can bring those next week.
Hey, listen, you're not the only one who can give homework, can I see what I did there? I gave homework as well, and that's what, what was I getting? So, the slogan, didn't we have another homework assignment? No?
Yes, principal, do we have another slogan?
I, I've been hit on the head, I thought I had another one for you, maybe it was Eddie, not sure, but that's one, do that, here's the other one. Grab another state or somebody in the community who's, who's willing to do this, okay? Bring them to the next meeting, and the meeting thereafter. I will be, we'll see if we can get somebody into the next meeting here to host it, um, we may not, but I'll be there for the next one after, okay? I can't remember what date it's, the next Thursday, okay? So bring another person in. We're at twenty-six people tonight, and twenty-one last of you. That's, that's a plus, right? Good, great, bringing more people helps the community. Any questions, last thoughts? Anyone? I got thirty seconds.
Okay.
Yeah, Joyce.
I mentioned this, uh, last week, I think, or the week before, that the biggest goal I have, as far as the children in Richford go, is when you, State Police, Sheriff's Department, Border Patrol, whatever, when they see you coming, I want them not to fear you. I want them, I want you to be a friendly presence, a supportive presence, and whatever.
Yes.
So, that's kind of new to us as residents of Richford, because every time we see you, you're arresting somebody, or chasing somebody, or whatever. How does law enforcement feel about this change of us wanting you to be here with a smile on your face, and here because you want to meet people, and you want to befriend the kids, and be a positive influence, other than, you know, everybody clearing out the streets when your car drives through? Is this a new idea of the police department, or is it?
It, it's not, nobody wants the kids to be afraid, it's not, there's not a trooper out here, everybody here's, at, at least up here as a parent, that's not what we have ever wanted. And this whole thing doesn't function without you, so everyone's aware that the relationship needs to go back and forth.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's not a foreign concept, and any, any trooper that works on the road is more than willing to, you know, give a kid, let them see their uniform, let them see the car, anything. As long as we aren't tasked in having to deal with chasing somebody down, or whatever else it is, absolutely, all day long, you talk to them, what, you know, do you want, what do you wanna be when you grow up, all that, it's part of the job.
Starts with the education at home too, but we get a lot of calls from parents wanting us to go in there, and basically, parents or child.
Just bad, yeah.
Be a bad guy, and that's where we have that conversation with the parents, letting them know, that's, that's not what we're doing. I will go there and I'll talk to the child, but I'm not gonna go there in this presence where I'm gonna be this intimidated guy, or, or yeah, or whoever, and then they're gonna actually fear me next time I have to deal with them. So we deal with this on, I'd say, a daily basis, absolutely.
Very, very good, for sure.
And we're always welcome, and whenever we roll through, we see kids going basketball, we'll stop them and, and talk to them, but it's definitely, I think, educational piece at home front is the most important.
That's where it all starts.
Yeah.
But sometimes we have parents that are the ones running away from you, and so you're, you're gonna have to try harder.
And you know, we always take it to be parent away, we try not to make that, you know, like, we understand it's a parent experience for the child, but we, as best as we can, and within their understanding, explain what's going on, when we can. You know, like anything else, communication is a par, is paramount.
Yeah, we're, we're here in front of the map, okay? And that, and hopefully, you guys can spread the word, we're as transparent as we can be, okay? We're here with open arms and open hands, uh, since I took command of barracks, we've had many foot patrols, and I don't know if you guys see them, go through the town, okay? Lynn has been a witness to many of them, okay? So we're here, you may not see us all the time, but we've increased our presence, okay? But, you know, again, we have to be realistic of what we can do.
It's made a difference, I want to tell you, the increased presence has made.
Thank you.
Yes, it has.
And we plan on more, uh, but, you know, work here with open arms and open hands, you guys, spread the word. If, you guys didn't come to us about this, we came to you, remember that. We came to you to do this. Okay, any other thing? Hey, you've been a great audience tonight for crowd, or community members, yes. So, thank you very much, and, um, let us know about the Harvest Festival, and I'll be in touch with, uh, Andrew, and, because, thank you.